Street event for the Children's Christmas Parade sponsored by the National Chamber of Commerce. We had a public hearing on this last Wednesday night and there's no objection from anyone to us having it, because it's been on the current for years and years and years on the first Saturday in December, which will be the same time this time. They've got all the affidavits and plays and security with the police department, everything's a good order. The Chair motion, we approve the consideration for the Children's Christmas Parade.
So may.
It has been moved and seconded, we approve the application for the Children's Christmas Parade. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor of indicating, so we're saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. It is approved. Item number B is a consideration of a person for the library board. A librarian has recommended to our town manager and he to us, the person of Neil Laraway to serve on the library advisory board. Her bio is in the material you have, she looks to be quite well qualified, having done a lot of library work in different places around the country. Can you not hear me? Having done much library work in different places around the country. The Chair motion, we approve this recommendation.
So may.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we approve the recommendation as a person to the library advisory boards. Any discussion?
I've just got one question.
Yes, sir.
Is this a new addition or is this a replacement for someone that may have come up?
Well, the number said, I am to assume it is a replacement. Katie, would you come to the podium and state your name and address, who can be on the record, please?
Katie Montgomery, Director of the Library. This is a replacement for Mr. Mark Brown, who resigned when he moved out of Nashville and to Rocky Mount, and he will soon be moving to Raleigh.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I was going to say, does this person live in Nashville?
She does, yes ma'am.
Okay, so she's a newcomer?
Yes, ma'am, she's been here about 10 months, just short of a year. She lives right up the street from Charles's brother?
My brother.
Yeah.
Okay.
Her daughter is one that owns.
Sweet Taters.
In Rocky Mount.
Okay. Further discussion? Okay, there being none, all in favor of indicating, so we're saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. You may notify her.
Thank you.
Okay, item number three is consideration for a resolution for payment of invoices. This again is some of those errant things that happened back when we were changing budgets, and we need to have a resolution to get these items paid. And all resolutions have to be read, so bear with me for just a moment. It says, whereas the North Carolina general statutes require pre-audit to be performed by the Finance Director before the town incurs an obligation, and whereas general statutes state that failure to perform the pre-audit requirements makes a contract agreement or purchase or void, and whereas general statutes further provide if an officer or employee of a local unit incurs an obligation or pays out or causes to be paid out any funds in violation of the pre-audit statute, he and the sureties on his official bond are liable for any sum so committed or dispersed, and whereas the general statutes also approve if the Finance Director approves appealed invoice or other claim, the governing board may step in to approve payment. And now therefore bill ordained to behalf of the mayor and the town council that through this resolution, the Town of Nashville Town Council has hereby approved the following invoices for payment, of which the total is $292.14 for 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 1, 2, for five items. Now, be it therefore further resolved, a copy of this resolution be spread upon permanent records of the Town of Nashville, adopted as first day of November 2016 with a corporate signature and attestations. Does the Chair motion approve the resolution?
So no.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, approve the resolution to get the bills paid. Is there any discussion?
Just one quick question. Just curious, you know, why are they dating back all the way to August on some of these items and now just now coming before? So they've just been sitting there waiting for us, or what causes it to come up now?
Well, that relates to when we actually get the bill.
Okay.
We can't pay something until we actually receive them.
Okay.
Further discussion? Okay, there being none, all in favor of indicating, so we're saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Accordingly, the bills can be paid. Item D is consideration of budget amendments, of which we have two. One for the Police Department, if you'll notice, they have received $4,000 for the Hope Grant, which goes into their expenditure item for drug prevention, which the current budget is 75.50, and this 4,000 addition added into it will be $11,550. Does the Chair here motion, we approve the budget amendment?
So may.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor of indicating, so we're saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Accordingly, that is approved. The second item deals with the library. We've had a donation in memory of Dolores Johnson. I understand that when Dale passed away, she requested instead of flowers, that people send money to the library, and we have collected $475 in that fund. I understand there's some more out there coming, which will go into the supplies restricted donation item of $475. The Chair here motion, we accept this amendment?
So no.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, we accept the amendments. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor of indicating, so we're saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Okay, accordingly, it's approved. Item E deals with the changes in how the state record keepers want to keep the records together. We have a letter here from our town clerk to our manager explaining what this is about, which I'll read for the record. The North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources Division of Archives and History has recently amended Standard 6 and Standard 9 of the municipal records retention schedule. These amendments clarify the retention for 911 calls received as text messages and reflects the recent legislation governing body worn camera for law enforcement personnel that went into effect on October 1, 2016. Since the Town of Nashville has previously adopted a municipal records retention schedule as the standard for our records retention, the town council should approve the attached amendments and forward documentation of the approval to the North Carolina Department of Cultural Resources in order to comply with their requirements. Please consider this item for our November agenda, feel free to contact me if you have any questions. And what they're doing here, they are including recordings and photography, coming from body cameras and from 9111 calls, which we do not have included in our records retention schedule. And you'll see how long we're supposed to keep these things and that sort of stuff, which is protocol sent to us by someone else. Does the Chair here motion, we approve the schedule?
So may.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor of indicating, so we're saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Okay, now we're complying with the law. Okay, the last item, item F, will require a little more discussion, is the discussion consideration of participation in the State Health Plan for the fiscal year 2017 and 18. What this amounts to tonight, we need to make the decision on whether we want to go forward with putting ourselves into the State Health Plan, which is now available. If you've read the cover letter, you will see that our clerk has been informed that the legislature has allowed a limited number of persons to join the State Health Plan to work in local government, and right now there are 5,000 places left. And we need to do, follow this process. One, we need to complete some type of general information form, and second, we need to adopt a local resolution, that's what we need to decide tonight. And then third, the interested parties need to enter into a contract with the plan for its participation. At this point, the earliest we can get into this would be July 1 of 2017, because the January enrollment date is already filled. And looking at the last chapter, I'm sorry, last paragraph, it tells you from the employer perspective, the premium cost for the, for, the same for each plan is $479.48 a month, of which there are three plans. If you look over here on the back, one is the Consumer Directed Health Plan, which is an 85.15 cost thing, and the enhanced 80.20 plan, and then the traditional 70.30 plan, which has always been with the state. And ask our manager to look into this and get us some numbers for our consideration, like what we're actually paying per month, per person now, and compare to which of the plans that he would recommend for management, because he's got to manage this thing. Hey, Mr. Manager, you got your program ready?
I can answer to the, I think the direct question you're asking, Mayor, is how does the cost of this new plan match up with the, with the cost of what our current plan is? The proposed plan is stated as $479.48. The current payout for just the individual cost of an employee is $616.40.
That's what we're paying now?
That's what we pay right now.
Now, this $479.48, the way this memorandum is stated indicates that we can buy any one of three plans at that price, but you tell me there's a differentiation in costing?
Depending on what type of coverage we want to provide, if we want to do more than the 70.30, if we want to cover an 80.20 plan, we can buy up to that and have that covered by the town.
All right, now the next, the next question we need to talk about is do we want to go forward with a resolution to get into this thing?
If we compare apples to apples, new plan versus what we've got now, would we have to go as high as 600, I mean, we're doing 600 now, would we be in the ballpark of $475 per employee?
Yes, that's.
Yeah, roughly.
That's, that's not losing or gaining any, any, any more than what we've got already?
You're asking, is the coverage going to be the same?
Is the coverage going to be the same? What would we lose?
Right now, right now, what we have is a 70.30 plan, but the 70.30 plan that the state offers is not the same level of coverage as what we have now. However, if we do the 80.20 plan that the state offers, that's still a substantial savings for the town, and actually in some ways exceeds what we cover now. So in a way, we're either going to get about the same, or some areas are better, or something substantially worse.
Yeah, if we go to the 80.20 plan, we still save $115.
Right, and the employees wouldn't lose anything?
No.
That's, that was my question.
Right. Now, the way this plan is set up, it's a one-way trip. If you decide to go to the State Health Plan, you can't ever leave the State Health Plan. That's the way the law was written. But you do join a much larger pool. So if we had like a catastrophic claim for the town, we typically see a 25% increase in our premiums from that, from year to year. The pool, the increase.
The way we are now.
The way we are now. The increase is going to be much smaller, because you're going to be lumped in with the pool of all state employees.
Okay.
So I think this will give us a lot more stability and smaller increases in our premiums from year to year. But, but we can't leave if we decided we didn't like some type of coverage that they had.
What would dictate, what would dictate raises based on the state plan?
What would dictate increases in the premiums?
Same thing, we have the cost of the program.
Right. If enough, if there were enough substantial claims statewide.
Then they would be forced to go up.
Right.
But now, see, we're averaging our costs in with thousands of other people, not just the 35 or 40 we have now, which take one person without our cost, which we've had happen a couple of times, but it bumps our annual premiums. Now we're working with tens of thousands of people that should average.
Plus, you'll have the state, though, being negotiating the rates on our behalf, instead of us annually negotiating our rate, which gets put up on us, no matter what.
Administratively, this would give us a lot more stability, because we know we're locked in with what the State Health Plan is. But an assisted thing is that the period for when we'll figure out what our premiums are going to be from year to year is in the month of October. So we will know in October what we're going to see an increase to be when we pass our budget by June 30th, you know, the following year. So we will, when it comes to our budget discussions, as soon as we start these discussions, we already know what our health insurance numbers are going to look like.
Hank, what is our anticipated increase for this, you know, for this next year?
For the.
For the plan we have now?
Well, it's too early for us to know that. We won't, we may not know that until as late as June of 2017, that we were that late finding out this past year. But I would suspect you could see another 25% increase again.
That's what I was anticipating, as opposed to 3.4% in 2017 of the state plan.
That's right.
I was just concerned about coverage and expense, future expense.
As for the quality of the program, I've been in the State Health Plan since they created it.
Right.
And that's been 40 years, and it's treated me pretty well, through all the ups and downs.
But the road we're going down right now is unsustainable.
Right.
And so. So, the question is, now, we want to empower our manager to move forward, create a resolution, start a motion to get into the health plan.
I moved it, we should.
I second.
Move it, I second that we start the process. It's a red discussion. There being none, all in favor of indicating, so we're saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. I think that's a very good idea. Okay, Mr. Manager, you got your report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
I'm glad to see it's tight.
Our Police Department had our first annual recovery rally out at Glover Park, with about 125 people who attended. The Monster Dash Race this past weekend also had about 125 who attended that. In terms of filling positions in our Police Department, I'd like to report that Investigator Steve Glover has now been promoted to the position of Sergeant. And our Police Department went to Nashville Elementary School recently and had lunch with some of the students. In our Planning Department, we'd like to report that the Zaxby's is going to be delayed in its opening, up to a couple of weeks from what they originally had said. So when we know what that date's going to be, I'll make sure that y'all are known. But right now, that's been pushed back. As far as Hurricane Matthew's concerned, the Planning Department reports that six businesses and approximately 49 dwellings were affected by floodwaters. And our library is coordinating with Nash Healthcare to provide advanced directives and living will seminars for senior citizens. Our Public Works Department to know the scale of this Hurricane Matthew that we had in the Town of Nashville, we had 569 man-hours cleaning up the storm, which included limbs chipped to 40 square yards of wood chips and 3,600 square yards of debris. Loose leaf collection is now underway, so you can stop bagging your leaves and now put them out on the street to be picked up. Now, as far as events coming up in the month of November, we'd like to report that on November the 8th, the Parks and Recreation Department is going to start having open gym at Nashville Elementary School, which is on Tuesdays from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. On November the 10th, they're going to start having basketball for Nashville Fire Department, Police Department, and the Sheriff's Office during the same times, which is something we've done in years past. We'd also like to highlight this coming weekend, on the 5th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., we're going to have the Nashville Fire Department Community Day, which is then organized involving our auxiliary for our centennial program, which Mr. Edwards can address a little bit later on. I'd also like to point out that on November the 7th, Council, I'd like for you to note on your calendars, that Nash County has asked us to be available at their council chambers for discussion of where we are with the opioid heroin situation in our community. At 10:00 a.m., around 10:30, they also plan on discussing, at that point in their meeting, revaluation. So I don't know how in-depth that's going to go, I just know that's going to come up in the discussion. So I want to make sure that you're aware that's taking place. That concludes my report, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Before we go further, you mentioned that we might hear something from the Fire Department about the Community Day. Would someone like to say something about that before we go further? Chief, you got somebody primed up for that? Thank you very much for your mercy, Mr. Manager. I haven't read it, but very cold on the call.
Mayor, Members of Council, as the manager referenced, the Community Day coming up October 5th, we're here tonight for a couple of different reasons. One, to invite you all as Council to attend, and also to let the community know via the TV that we're having the event and that everybody is welcome. I just wanted to kind of give you an update and say thank you for turning the fire truck, the 48 La France, over to the auxiliary. They've raised a little over $5,000 to this point. The truck is running at this point, and it will be on display at the celebration on Saturday. Still have a lot of work to go. We're still trying to raise another 15,000 to get it completely restored. But we thank you for sending that to the auxiliary's way, and that'll be a very nice fire prevention tool for the, for the children. So what I'm going to do at this time is just turn it over to Chief Edwards to give you an overview of the events for Saturday.
Good evening, Members of Council, Mayor, Mr. Raper. I'd like to first thank you all for allowing me to come back to talk about our Community Day that's coming up this, this weekend. Like, like the Fire Chief just said, it's going to be from 10:00 to 4:00 on Saturday, November the 5th. It's going to be out at Glover Park. As you can see with the flyer that I've given you, this is kind of, kind of your invitation, a hand invitation per se. You can see we're going to have live entertainment. Adam Stone, which is a local artist, he'll, he'll be here. Meredith Davis, she's also a local artist. And we also not pictured a third musical act, Ted Jones and the Tar Heel Boys, a local bluegrass band made up of four individuals. One, which is a Lewisburg firefighter. So they're all looking forward to come down to support us and come into our community. You can see here, we've got several different events that we're going to have going on. Everything from smokehouse, fire prevention, confirmed today with Batman and Cinderella both, that they will be there around lunchtime on, on Saturday. We're going to have junior firefighter games for little kids to, to come out and dress up and be junior firefighters. And also heard from Rocky Mount Fire Department today that they will be on hand to help support us with fire prevention activities with their new inflatable fire prevention house. So that's something that we'll have up for display, that the kids will be able to enjoy. They actually had that displayed at the State Fair last year. So static displays we'll have from the Fire Marshal's office, an ambulance, Kubota, our rescue truck, our rescue trailers, and just stuff like that, that we can put on display for our community members to come out and see exactly what we have and what we're able to do. And then finally, of course, everybody wants to eat. We're going to have turkey legs, we're going to have hot dogs, cotton candy, popcorn, funnel cakes, all that good stuff. So please come out, enjoy yourselves. If there's any questions that day, find me or someone with one of these shirts on, and we'll be able to help you. If there's any questions?
Did I understand you earlier to say you spoke to Batman?
I did speak to Batman today, and that blew my five-year-old mind when I told, told her that, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Him and, him and Cinderella, so, yeah, yes, sir.
Will there be, any cost to any of the things, the food or anything there?
The, as of, as of right now, everything that we will have there will be free to the public.
Okay.
As, as of now. And I'm actually leaving in just a second to go back to iron out some, some details. But I do know that the hot dogs and stuff that we are providing, you come and, come and get it. That's why we are doing this thing, to give back. So.
And you didn't get the turkey legs?
I did.
At the State Fair, they were $10 turkey leg.
Yes.
So Saturday, it'll be free?
I hope so. Again, that's, I'm going to go back and iron some, some of that out. Chief Edmonds, that his brother is handling that for us, so I'm going to get some details back from, from him. But I do know that you'll be able to come get a red bright leaf hot dog for free, so.
Very good.
Anything else?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all, have a good night, thank you.
Thank you, we'll see you then. Chief, you have all the comments?
I guess not.
Okay, I guess not. Okay. Bye. Okay, okay, now it's time for Council comments. Before we get going, I'd like to thank everybody who participated in the flood response, the flood recovery, the whole operation. I want to thank the chief, he's already taken off, and all of our pumping utilities people, and our law enforcement people, anybody else who was involved in it. Because, you know, that thing came on us very quickly, and it caused a lot, a lot of damage very quickly. I enforced it was out of town, but I stayed in touch with our manager all the time on things. I was happy to see it go, go away about as fast as it came, which was very good. But anyway, thanks that everybody put in all the extra time and got, got it going. Also, last night was Halloween, and from my point of view, we had a very safe event. The police were all over the place, they came by my house several times. We always get a large number of business out there. Last night, I gave away 205 pieces of candy. And just as an aside, as all of you know, I have a porta john in my front yard because of some construction work going on, and it had about 50 visits. So it was full service operation. Anyway, thank you, Chief, for your work during the flood, Jamie and all your people, and the Fire Chief is now gone. Anyway, thank him for me. Okay, Mr. Taylor?
Well, that's basically what I was going to say, Mayor, but you beat me to it this time.
Sorry to take your thunder.
That's okay, but I'll just reiterate what you, what you just said, all of our departments, public service and police and fire, they did an outstanding job. I got up early, it was Sunday morning, to go out and count the candles and see what was going on. And it was just a shock to me at the level of some, some of the water, not that I hadn't seen it before, but I do think it was that much. And I wanted to thank the chief, but he made a hasty retreat. I just flipped through this, because we just got it from the town manager a few minutes ago. There's a lot, it appears to be a lot of good information in here that we can use, that, that they, somebody took the time to put together. And going through this right here, we could, we can praise ourselves for what we did right, and if there's anything in there that we, that we can improve on, this is a good tool for us to start with. So I'd like to commend them for, for doing a great job, all the departments there. We've got an outstanding crew here in Nashville.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Taylor?
Glad to hear Councilor say about the crew, because the crew consists of every county employee we have. I think our town employees give 100% on a daily basis. I'd like to thank them for that.
Yeah. Okay, you said?
I was just flipping through. Jamie, you could probably expand on this. We had $4,000 damage to lift stations.
Yes.
Is that a win?
Electrical related.
But they're okay now, regardless? And we had 569 man-hours. What does that translate into?
In terms of cost?
Yes.
Oh, well, I mean, we have to do some calculations on that, but quite a bit.
But we need to know that.
Yeah. And a lot, going along with that, a lot of time went into not only cleaning the storm up, but Mr. Hassel's put a lot of time in, in the damage assessment portion of this, because there's a lot of paperwork that goes with coming, dealing with the storm, dealing with reimbursements, you know, compensating, keeping up with people's hours. It's a lot of work that goes into that behind the scenes, so.
Brian, I think you said that you had applied for reimbursement?
Yes, ma'am, we have all of our paperwork. Ms. Maudlin helped me, and we've given everything to FEMA, and now we're in a holding pattern, wait to see if we're eligible. And if we are, we've been collecting all the documentation necessary to, to give them at that time.
Thank you. Ms. Coleman?
All right, well, first, I'd like to just repeat what's already been said, you know, that every single staff member in, in Town of Nashville for everything they did through the hurricane. I know, as you may know, my, my church was impacted, Church on the Rise downtown, and, you know, I went down there a couple of times that evening, at 9:00, at 1:00, and at 3:00 in the morning, checking on it. And it was just amazing how fast the water rose, because at 9:00, it was still within its banks, but it was just on the rim, the outer edge. And then by 12:00, it had done, you know, flooded towards the church, but by 3:00, the church had about, you know, eight inches of water inside of it, you know, and at 3:00, I think, you know, Chief Goodbrot and, and some of the EMS from Nash County were having to do a water rescue for some people out at the Waffle House, and so they've got to experience that. But everybody did a great job with everything they did. And just want to commend Town Manager and, and the Chief and Brian. I think we, they stopped by and came to the church the next Sunday. We had an outside service, and they came by to give a community report. And we had several individuals from the community that were impacted by the flood to show up for that as well. So they got some good information and found out how they can get some assistance. And so I know people were very grateful to hear about that. FEMA has packed up at the college, and so they're no longer, you know, I guess they assessed the area and then finally come to the conclusion that they could be used other places. And so they've packed up since then. But just want to let everybody know that the college has, we had a lot of supplies donated to us from other institutions, so that we have it at the college now. So if people are still struggling with food or water, cleaning supplies, you can still come out to the college and we can be able to help them to receive some of those things. Also, I wanted to announce that as of today, the Nashville Chamber is going to be reinstituting something that we, we've done in the past, and that's do a Christmas decorating competition. For this year, we're just going to keep it for businesses, but I think next year, we're going to expand it to residents as well. So we'll, we'll have some more information forthcoming about that. But we're going to, you know, try to have a friendly competition with businesses in the Town of Nashville to decorate their facilities and then possibly win prizes for, for that, just to bring up the festivity of it all. that, just to bring up the festivity of it all, that thing, that would be great. And then the last item I was going to mention, I know you mentioned November 7th, Nash County wanting us to be present, I unfortunately will not be able to be there next week, I'm going to Lynchburg next week to do my comprehensive exams for my doctorate degree, and so I'll be, you know, I'm already kind of nervous about all that, but yeah, so I will not be able to be there.
Is it the written part or the oral part?
This is the, this is the written part, dissertation comes after, so...
Good luck.
Yep.
Good luck.
And I too love you, Tim.
Yeah, I've been there, done that. Good luck. Other comments? Well, thank you very much for coming, everybody. We will proceed to close, does the Chair motion adjourn?
I move adjourn.
Did I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, adjourn, is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate yourself by saying yes.
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 Opposed, no. Accordingly, we adjourn.